So ordered. Uh, if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance, the flag's on the back wall back there. Mr. Groden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. If everyone can put their electronic devices as needed. Motion to move the agenda to the table made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Dr. Evans, any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, yes, President Crumley, I am recommending that we remove action item T seventeen from tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Motion to adopt the agenda with the deletion. Made by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Mr. Groden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Approval of draft minutes, February first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Student board member update.
How are you today, Mr. Crumley?
Lovely, yourself?
I'm doing very well.
Fantastic.
Some very exciting news, especially from our athletic department. Both Alpine and Nordic ski teams made Monticello proud at the section nine championships. For Nordic skiing, Caitlin Morris, Giovanni Pintierras, and Yusef Eslayad all qualified for states, so that is a huge. And we have a lot of exciting news from our Alpine skiers. Both Alexis Hines and Sam Riley both qualified for states and they won the section nine championship for boys' Alpine skiing and girls' Alpine skiing for their individual, um, the individual championship, so. Um, and our other Alpine skiers that also qualified for states besides Alexis Hines and Sam Ryan are Reese Kelly, Andrew Weiner, and Diego Ferrer. And lastly, Monticello won the boys' team championship and which consists of Sam Ryan, Reese Kelly, Diego Ferrer, Owen Messenger, Andrew Weiner, and Giuliano Princiso. Uh, our boys varsity basketball game has their last regular season game tonight, uh, and they qualified for sectionals, so always great to hear that. And our very own Coach Russo won his one hundred and fiftieth career win, which is great. Ashland Garcia finished second at sectionals for wrestling this past weekend. And some other news, Xavier Mitchell and Judah Brown are going to my brother's keeper for their stand and deliver this weekend in Albany. A student distinction awards were presented on Monday and February second was the Liberty Jazz Fest, which is always widely successful, um, lots of attendees as always, and it was just a great event. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our student board member? Thank you very much for, uh, bringing that to us. Um, and I'm sure why everyone's here tonight, we have a couple intriguing presentations on our budget. Um, I guess I'll hand this over to Dr. Evans and Mrs. Finley.
Thank you, President Crumley. So, uh, tonight is the first in a series of, uh, budget presentations from administrators and directors in our district. These represent, uh, what they have identified as needs, uh, to not only keep their departments and schools running, uh, but also to hopefully improve upon them. Uh, so, uh, before I get into too much more detail about the current status of state aid as it relates to our district, I will first turn this over to Ms. Bayla, our administrators here tonight, who are to talk about, uh, my operations, transportation, technology, and security budgets for next year. Ms. Bayla?
Thank you, Dr. Evans. So this evening, um, we have plan operations, like you said, anyway, introduction. So we, the board appreciates all public, um, input. Uh, please remember, the board does adopt the final budget. It's adopted and presented to the public at a budget hearing in May, and then the public will vote on the budget. Additional detail of the budget will be presented at subsequent meetings, and our goal is to be as transparent as possible. At the end of the presentation, we'll open floor for questions from the board. If we don't have an answer, we will provide it at subsequent budget presentation. Next slide. Of course, our key focus points is our vision, our mission, and the board goals. Not gonna read all of them. And up first for your budget presentation is plan operations, our Director of Facilities, Mr. Stephen Loos.
Good evening, everyone. That's the side there, obviously, uh, just made a few changes with the budget this year from last year. The first line item, uh, I was able to take, uh, forty thousand dollars off of that. Made some changes in contracts and other things, so that lowered that number. The rest of the fuel oil stayed the same. We really don't know, we don't have our new fuel oil bid yet. We don't know if that's, how that's really gonna go, what to see. Uh, propane, we changed that. Transportation's gonna pay twenty percent of it because they're atable. Water, we just made adjustment because of inflation, electricity, telephone. General supplies stayed the same. Stowed equipment, I don't, we're in really great shape, stowed equipment. I feel like we, yeah, I left thirty thousand there just for repairs and just in a pinch, if we needed to get a scrubber or something. Equipment replacement, I got a hundred and ten there. The loader is ten years old and three thousand hours. That's right at the window where it'll start really depreciating in value if we don't trade now. So the, the loader, uh, the new loader's around one thirty, they're, they're anticipated forty to fifty on trade, so that's, and it, it just, I left a little there getting by another mower. Uh, the purchase service, uh, is raised, my overall budget rate, one nineteen, but, uh, I'd like to seal the parking lots, finish the TBS, the middle school. Day C units in the auditorium need to be replaced, we would do that in-house. We need a new condenser, new coil, new line sets. The current refrigerant that's in it is R twenty-two, which is obsolete, uh, so that, that hole would need to get changed. We are down to one unit there working now. If we were to lose that unit, we'd have no AC in the auditorium. So that's where that is. There's, I'd like to seal the brick in the middle school, as we did, uh, by the, I'd like to do it by the locker room like we did in the courtyard. We get water running, it's not a roof leak, it's the wall seeping through the roof. Uh, we have an issue in room ten. Replace a few more doors, and, and that's where that money is. Everything else is pretty much staying the same. Custodial supply is up some due to inflation. I did take, uh, supply grounds down, twenty grand, because I'm thinking that ball fields are in really good shape. So I don't anticipate them buying any baseball there, you know, anything like that, so we, we should be good shape there. And district vehicles, uh, repair are greatest at because of inflation and just that's, we didn't have enough. We're already out of that twenty-six already, so that's why that's there. So the overall budget rate, one nineteen, and that's really. Not gonna replace any trucks, uh, PO two is one of our Dodge fifty-five hundred dollar, uh, fifty-five hundred series dump trucks. We plan with that, has a dump body. I have money left over from this year and my equipment supply, I want to put a stainless steel body on it. The dump body's getting pretty rotten, but the truck is really, the gray chips, I only got sixteen thousand miles on it. So I want to put a new dump body on that and a new spreader in that, but we already did PO for that, so we're not replacing any vehicles this year. And that's, that's where we're at.
Any questions for Ms. Loos?
Do you mind explaining a little bit more about that AC for the auditorium? I just don't know what exists there currently, so if you could talk about that a little bit.
There's three major pieces to an AC unit. The condenser's what's on the roof, big piece. And then in the fan room is a coil. So that, them units, there's two condensers and two coils. They're, the coils are relatively newer than the rooftop units. Condenser on the top on one is leaking, has several leaks in it. R twenty-two refrigerant is, it's probably six or seven hundred dollars an ounce. So we don't, we can't, and you can't get R twenty-two, so we, and we can't put a different three on in there, so it has to all be replaced. So, like I said, we're down to one unit in the auditorium right now, and one unit does. But that's the same age as the other. So that should fail, we would have no AC in the auditorium. We would do the work in-house rather than use a crane to set the rooftop units, other than that, we would do the.
And then that's to replace one unit or both of them?
Both of them.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no sense doing.
And it would be the whole system, the coil tube?
The coil's in the, in the fan room, it's like a, it will like a suitcase. It's made so you unbol it, it slides out, you slide a new one in. In the rooftop unit, we take the old one off and set a new one.
But all the dump work and all that counts, eh?
No, that all stays.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. The other, the other question I have is about finished TBS in the middle school.
The TBS system, so that, that's the building automation system.
Okay.
Uh, we did the, we did the third floor and the second floor, like, I think, three years ago or four years ago, we did the first, the second floor. We did the third floor, now we have the third floor that's left. And that building will completely be, it's back net system, computer system, where the, what's there now is long, but it's outdated. We can't, we lose it. It's a constant battle to get it to where it needs to be. And the, the only reason we're staying with TBS is because I have the two first-donors TBS. All the other buildings are trained. We're currently, there was a lot of work done in high school with, with train through the capital project and the EPC project. But there's some areas in the EPC they pick what they, what the biggest payback is. So there's a few units that didn't get touched, that are still TBS that we have trouble controlling. And we already, that money's already been spent from this year's budget to convert the high school all to train. And the only building I'll have left is the middle school with TBS.
And that's like a temperature control?
Temperature control.
Thank you.
Yeah. No other questions?
You said the middle school, though, you weren't complaining?
It's like, if you were in, in the courtyard, if you went up on the third floor and there's around them, you know, the windows with the glass blocks?
Yeah.
So that, that was seeping in around the weed poles, hurt when they laid, they put weed poles in it. And maybe the pointing is bad, so that was leaking there. And now we have that same thing in the locker room. It doesn't leak all the time, when you get a hard, heavy wind-driven rain, it leaks.
The hole?
No.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. So next up is our Director of Transportation, Robin Sklar.
Hey, everybody, how you doing? I have quite a few increases. Uh, starting off, the school bus purchase, we went up a hundred thousand. True reason for price of inflation on regular diesel buses, plus if we do receive grants for any electric buses with the chargers, there's about a twenty to thirty thousand extra that we had to pay to finish the job. So that's just in case, hopefully we'll get it. Purchased services stay the same, drag training, uh, increase in contract transportation. We have at least five contracts out this year. When I first started here, we had a lot of contracts also, and I tried to bring, brought it all in, except for one, for in-house that we did. But between the driver shortage and, uh, schools accepting kids at a district, we're out in Poughkeepsie, we're out in Anewett, we're out Boy Plains, we're out, uh, almost to the Connecticut, uh, border, we're everywhere, and, uh, it's, we're fit with resources. So that's an increase that hopefully we won't have to use it next year, but it's there, we need it. Physicals for the drivers, that stays the same. Conferences, a lot of that too is used for training the drivers' monitors. Auto insurance stays the same, general supplies, um, bus part bids, I did increase that a little bit because every year the prices are just going up. They stayed pretty steady last year from the year before. After COVID, everybody knows, everything jumped, but, uh, they're starting to rise again. Gasoline, I moved that up again, inflation, and we didn't get our bid yet, so. Diesel, we're okay at, engine oil, that's good. Uh, tires, I did do, do a price increase for inflation. That section, uh, that budget code, it's about three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars more. My second budget code, which is more for the building, is, uh, basically stay the same, but I did take, uh, the twenty percent of the fueling oil because we are atable under bus garage, so that helps save some. Machine repairs the same, fuel, um, I'm sorry, water, electricity, all that's basically the same. And from that budget code, we went up about nineteen thousand, which is about a total of four hundred thousand dollars of increase that we did do for transportation.
Any questions for Ms. Sklar?
I'm just curious, how can legal say the same if you don't?
I, I had a healthy budget with that, and, uh, we had actually used part of that last year to move over to gasoline. I did have to do a transfer, uh, budget transfer to move some of the diesel over to the thing. And we had a much better, um, price, actually, on diesel than we did on the gasoline percentage-wise.
And this is the increase of contracts, so this year you see more students than previous years?
It's not, it's not more students, more students going to add a district.
Yes, I mean, there's been increases here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're having, I guess, BOSEs having trouble, Sullivan BOSEs accepting these children, and matter of fact, um, right now, to be exact, uh, Falsford, I'm sharing, uh, right here with them for a curious jewel and abilities in one part of Poughkeepsie, where thirty miles to the other side of Poughkeepsie, we're doing. I also, the, um, Business and Mastos gave us a fantastic price. They're doing their own driving. Uh, Roland B is still doing Center for Discovery for us. We have a student out in Albany that her aunt, who lives in Monticello, got custody of her, so we have to contract out to them to take, she lives in Albany, very special needs. They're taking her back toward the school. Like I said, I have NIAC, I got three children going to NIAC, two kids going to Westchester, Mount Pleasant, Green Chimneys. I have two Kingston ones and another abilities one. Not even mentioning displaced children, foster children, and this changes daily. You, you don't even know where we're going sometimes, so it, it works stretch. You will.
Would you say that the majority of the increase in the, the budget here? It looks like it goes up by maybe forty thousand, and this is two hundred and fifty thousand of it is just talking about the contract.
Yeah, most of it is the contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so next is. Next is instructional technology. Um, our Director of Technology, Kim Horton, is at a conference this evening, so, uh, we met with her about, um, three or four weeks ago, and she kept her budget exactly the same as last year. We didn't question her, make sure that that was enough money in her budget, that she didn't need other things, and she was very confident that this is what she needs, and it's the one for her, so there are no increases in technology. Any questions?
Is that realistic with inflation, that she's not gonna need anything more than same as last year?
So we asked her, and she was very comfortable with that, so. And finally, the last is, uh, security. Our Director of Security is also out here this evening. Her budget went down ten thousand dollars mainly because we purchased metal detectors last year. Um, she did not request to buy any more metal detectors. And it's turning off, I think. I don't know why it keeps turning off, I'm sorry. Um, and in supplies, we have a software for time clocks that we got rid of, and she's going, she's looking at new software for entry control. If you have any questions about her budget, I will take them back to her.
How many metal detectors did we buy last year? Six?
No.
Two. Two, two walkthroughs and then ones. Does it behoove us to not do that again?
I don't know that, um.
Or even have that?
Well, we would have to look at, you know, how do we actually staff those? So there's, that's kind of the, the other piece to this that would drive a.
What I also look at is if we had an issue with one unit going down, you would have a spare to put in place.
So most, we can ask her about that. Most of the, when we do the random metal detection of students, most of it is with the ones. So we're only gonna use those gates, uh, you know, for large-scale events where we might be asking out with a walkthrough.
All right.
But I'll bring that back to Ms. Ragman, it turned off. We'll bring that back to Ms. Ragman for, for the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, the next slide is, um, just our annual slide on our enrollment. I use the bed stay number, and you can see that we've lost about three hundred students over the last nine years. Uh, next slide. Next slide is just a summary of our budget and our tax levy over the years. You can see that twenty-one, twenty-two, we did reduce the tax levy to forty-three million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, and it's, has stayed there for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. And the budget calendar, next slide. So April twenty-second is the deadline for voter-initiated petitions for the ballot and the deadline for board candidates. April twenty-third is the final legal date for adoption of the budget by the board. May second, three-part budget document is available upon request in our various locations. May ninth is the budget hearing. May twenty-first is the annual meeting and budget vote. Our next budget presentation on March seventh will be our building budgets and athletics and physical education. March twenty-first will be curriculum and staff development, EPS, BOSEs, instructional staffing benefits in district-wide. And April sixteenth is the adoption of the budget. Any questions that we haven't already answered?
I have a quick question. What is the law with BOSEs that we have our children being shipped so far away? They, higher level care these children need?
So a lot of BOSEs out of district placements ultimately depend on the unique needs of the student. So there may be instances where, uh, the Committee on Special Education is recommending a BOSEs placement, and Sullivan BOSEs, for example, might not have the appropriate program, and then that would cause us to look either other BOSEs or other, other programs, uh, outside of BOSEs to provide services to those students. Sullivan BOSEs, like many school districts across the state, also struggles with, uh, recruiting and retaining personnel. And they too are having staffing shortages that don't always allow them to keep up with the demands that the component districts have. So, uh, it is a concern that, that we and other school districts have in the county, uh, we have shared with Sullivan BOSEs, but, you know, they, they put together the best program that they can.
Are we seeing a major increase?
In?
Children being sent like from Green Chimneys, like further out than last year? And do you foresee this happening again in the next fall?
I, I mean, look, overall, there's, it's, as was shown earlier, there's an overall decline in enrollment. Um, we've seen consistent with that, uh, you know, a relative same, not same percentage of students with disabilities. Now, what I don't have at my fingertips is the data to say that, well, we have so many more students going to out-of-district placement compared to Sullivan BOSEs or compared to what we've been keeping in mind, that we'd have to go do some more data on. But I think what Ms. Sklar highlights is that, you know, trying to find those unique programs are further and further away. Uh, and what she didn't mention, but she had shared also with us, is that, uh, they're not always on the same schedule. So she talked about the buses that go to Westchester and NIAC and Green Chimneys. Those are, I think, three different buses, I, I think, because they can't, they can't line up with our schedule or work for us in terms of transportation, so you run into that as well.
Thank you.
So based upon that, is it more expensive to send our children out than it is to BOSEs, and is it all atable on either instance?
Yes, yes.
So there's not like a, a cap limit that if you send them here, they only pay, they're only eight on this, but if we have to send them further away to Poughkeepsie or wherever else, the eight is the same percentage, or we get full eight on it?
So it's excess cost aid?
Okay.
So that's, that has a cap that's the same regardless of where? So you have to have a threshold, and the program has to exceed that threshold. It doesn't matter if it's in Sullivan County, Orange County, Dutchess County. It's the same, it's based on a district threshold, not a program threshold.
Any questions around the table? All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Evans and Mrs. Bayla, for having that for us this evening. Uh, moving on, uh, Mrs. Greco.
I motion that we approve agenda items F one to M two as a group.
Seconded by Ms. Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered, thank you very much. Uh, moving on then to information reports and discussions, board roundtable. Uh, Ms. Greco.
No report.
Ms. Galligan. What are ski mates?
Just a mimic. Just a mimic, oh, sorry. Um, just a mimic again, congratulations to all our Nordic and Alpine skiers, and I thoroughly enjoyed the Alpine team, um, yesterday from a cold, windy place in Hunter Mountain, but, uh, I really just wanna, I was really proud of all the kids, and again, just really all I got to report. Thanks.
Very much, Mr. Groden.
How about now? I too would like to echo the fact that it's amazing that our ski teams are kicking butt and taking names. Um, having been a captain here at the ski team, having been going, having gone to states, they are gonna have an amazing time in Placid, and I am so rooting for them. Can't wait to see them slide even faster. I know. And, uh, then, along the lines of more athletics, uh, who'd imagine that, at the twelfth on Monday, being part of the electricity of the Capital Project meeting? You guys could just see what we're doing, it's amazing. The plans we have are outside, and our other athletes is gonna blow you away. What we're gonna do is position Monticello to be the premier place, so I'm extremely excited to be part of Monty Pride.
Thank you, Mr. Groden, Mrs. Larusa.
Um, I would like to echo the same, and congratulations on the sports team and Coach Russo.
I have the privilege of being a. I'll just walk loud. I, uh, I went over to St. John Street, and I was a snack helper. I absolutely love the pre-K program, they are absolutely adorable, and, um, this one little boy calls me grandma. I'm not sure who he is, but I'm grandma to him. Uh, it was a lot of fun this week. Um, and I want to say, I want to thank the teachers. I've seen a lot of awesome stuff out on Facebook. There was a little girl, I think it was maybe Cook or Chase, and sort of reading challenge. There was a little girl, I think it was maybe Cook or Chase and sort of reading challenge. I love seeing that stuff. I love seeing our students excel. And, oh, I attended sectionals for boys wrestling. I did not go on Sunday for the girls. Congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Larusso. Mrs. Riley?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Mrs. O.
I also attended the Capital Project Committee. It's exciting times.
I also attended the Capital Project and looking back on Mr. Grodin, I can't wait also. I attended numerous basketball games and congratulations to all of our athletes and a thrilling audit committee meeting prior to this.
I also attended the Capital Project Committee. I do believe we have BBS scheduled for the second meeting in March or the first meeting in March?
I believe that's the first meeting.
The first meeting in March. BBS should be coming to give us a presentation on our plans for the upcoming Capital Project referendum we would like to put out and for the full board to kind of see what's going on, on the committee level. Also attended the audit committee. I really wanted to go to something last weekend. Orange Ulster BOSEs was holding a Skills USA competition. I believe the Sullivan County BOSEs also had some students there.
Correct.
Yep. Orange Ulster BOSEs was doing a home team thing and they only posted their students who did well in the competition. I was hoping you might be able to reach out to Ms. Dr. DeBoer and see how maybe our students did in that competition.
I can do that and, but we haven't heard any word since then.
Okay.
So, but I'll reach out to them.
Well, I, I did go through the Orange Ulster BOSEs site and they only posted their kids. They didn't post anybody else. So thank you, everybody, for all of that. Moving on to director reports. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding our director reports? None at this time? All right. Correspondence outcomes? None at this time. Policy committee memo. Dr. Evans.
Thank you, President Crumley. So tonight, the board will be conducting first readings on seven different policies. These policy recommendations come to us from the New York State School Boards Association. All except one are really, you know, taken kind of verbatim from what NISBA has recommended. The one exception to that is the board organizational meeting. Even though they did provide a policy update, we had some different things in our policy that needed to be reconciled with their recommendations. So we've done that and all of these have been reviewed and approved to move forward to the full board by the policy committee. And the policy committee will be meeting again March 7th at 5:30 PM.
Questions on policy? Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving on to capital project update.
Thank you again, President Crumley. So a few different things relative to the capital project. First and foremost, work continues on the reconstruction of high school rooms 111 and 113. They were actually here earlier this evening. They have, the floors have been completely replaced. The interior wall has been rebuilt and reconstructed and that's now a kind of a permanent wall. So it's no longer a partial wall or have a gap in the ceiling. Tile floor has been added. I believe the cabinetry has been moved back in and we expect classes to be able to move back in that space before March 1st. So I have shared photos with the board. However, those are already dated. So it looks much better than the photos that I've shared with you. As was mentioned earlier, we had a capital project committee meeting on February 12th with BBS Architects. Before they come to the full board to do a presentation on what we're looking at for a potential future capital project, and we'll be meeting with a staff focus group tomorrow as part of our conference day to review some of the things that are being considered as well as to hear from them about other possible inclusions to that project. And also be opening up some other community-led, community-focused groups over the next several weeks to do the same. We've also issued a request for proposal for construction management for a future capital project, but in the interim, we are opting to contract for pre-referendum services with Schoolhouse, Schoolhouse Construction. What they will be doing is basically coordinating with our architect and verifying that the estimates that they are giving are true and accurate to what the field is currently charging for services and labor. So the board is acting on that tonight and Schoolhouse Construction is willing to do that work without charge and will be looking for RFPs from different construction firms for construction management in the near future.
Any questions regarding capital project update?
I have a question, but it goes back a little. I'm sorry. Teresa, for McCoy, Ms. McCoy's report, it mentioned that you received a grant to expand school basement to health. When is that to start?
I believe you're working on finding a location within the district to start that. It was a shared grant with public agencies, so we're just like one piece of it. So I know she's looking to have that start soon.
Do you know what public agency it is?
It's a master services. Master Services.
I think, I'm sorry.
To the third.
One quick question, I'm sorry. The community engagement update, that's what in, that you sent to us on the, that survey that?
Yes.
I keep a question for you. Are we allowed to discuss that now?
Well, it's in my report.
I'm ahead, go ahead.
We'll get there. So we're good on capital project update? All right. Upcoming events are listed in your agenda. Community events are also listed in a, listed on your agenda for you to go through.
Could I please talk about community events real quick? Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, awesome. It's more like, should have been maybe spoken about during the roundtable, but I read it earlier and I misplaced it in the notes, but the director of athletics, Brian Jasper, talked about congratulations to students that were, had great showing, the Sullivan County Championships on February 5th and for the varsity indoor track field team. So there was like a handful of students, I just figured maybe the other ones were mentioned, maybe mentioned as well. So congrats would go out to Eddie Salinas, DeAndre Amor, Tobias Brown, Jamel Little, Tyrese Shaw, Tahir Denton, Chelsea Reynolds, Daya Patel, Gabby Elmonte, Kayleen Harris and Tiara Harris for all taking home gold medals. And then also to speak on Rafael, Lisiaga for being recognized at the Section 9 Football Coaches banquet as a Section 9 All-Star. So just to reiterate, that was in the notes. Thank you. You've spent so many, so thank you.
Thank you very much. So community events listed on the agenda. Questions, comments from the public? Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, we have two people. First is Danielle Fitzpatrick.
All right. I just need to do a quick little disclaimer and then it's all yours. Board of Education recognized the value of public comment on educational issues a matter of public interest. In order to permit fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and be administered by the presiding officer. Please note, first public comment period of 45 minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of 15 minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Neither public comment period is time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you wish to speak, place your name, email and/or address and telephone number on the sign-in list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comment, state your name for the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his/her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position or situation in his/her comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president or designate. Handouts and/or petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution to the board. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information reports and discussions to keep board informed of the outcomes. It will be titled correspondence outcomes and will be a public document. That concludes my little disclaimer. If you could just come up closer to the microphone. Thank you very much.
My name is Danielle Fitzpatrick. I have two children in the district. I have a 12-year-old in seventh grade. He's afraid to go to school. I have much more than three minutes to say, so I'm going to cut it short. There seems to be a bike club atmosphere going on in the middle school bathroom. Kids identify who they want to meet up and then jump the kid in the bathroom while somebody else videotapes it. My kid has enough problems with learning disabilities and, and other issues and now he's just afraid to go to school. I don't think this is a problem. I think it's an ongoing problem and I think that it really does need to be addressed at this point. I inquired in principal and the vice principal about what we can do to help fix the problem, but apparently there's no budget and a lack of staffing. My husband is a corrections officer. He offered to organize a bunch of his friends in a volunteer basis to just stand there at the bathrooms and like scarecrow effect and, you know, just report off what this is happening. But apparently that's not allowed. Something has to be done. Something has to be done. You can't. I have 17 videos of this and that's a fraction of, of what happens every single day. I understand the lack of funding. I understand the lack of staff and security. I spoke to the SROs. But the community, there are enough people in the community willing to step in and volunteer their time as needed. New York State doesn't have a law against parents volunteering. Parents Bill Royce encourages parents volunteering. So I guess I'm just looking for some cooperation because my child, he lives here. I own a home here. I have to be here and I want the, the environment better for my child. I would rather work with the school district and the school board than, again, because I think it's something that can be.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Fitzpatrick. And somebody from the district will be reaching out to touch base.
Tonight, I'm addressing you on behalf of the Monticello Teachers Association. My name is Joanne Keller and I am the vice president of negotiations for the MTA. The Monticello Teachers' contract will expire at the end of this school year. The MTA has been preparing for the upcoming negotiations and we are just about ready. Monticello has a shortage of teachers. We have special education students not being serviced by special education teachers. We have numerous teachers who feel overworked and overwhelmed as they teach extra classes to cover these positions. Many of the positions open are due to the mass exodus of tenured teachers who have moved on to other districts. The MTA is currently surveying those past members. However, most teachers leave for higher salaries, better benefits and better working conditions. MCSD is in a perilous position. If we do not hire and retain teachers, we will be facing some very serious problems. It is for these reasons that we must negotiate a contract by the end of this school year that will attract new teachers to our district and retain those teachers currently serving Monticello. What new teacher, who will most likely be offered several offers, will choose Monticello because we do not have a current contract? Why would they choose Monticello if they are not 100% sure of their offered salary or benefits? What veteran teacher who was offered a position in another district will choose to stay at Monticello when they too are unsure of what their next year's salary will be or what benefits will be negotiated for them? The date offered to the MTA for our first negotiation is April 23rd. If our negotiation process does not change, we will not be settled by June. Our last negotiation was tedious process. The MCSD team was unable to negotiate at the table and needed to bring everything back to the Board of Education. There was little discussion at the table and nothing was ever agreed to at the table. In past negotiations, which I've been a part of, members of the MCSD team were given the authority to negotiate at the table. The MTA is requesting that this Board of Education give the MCSD team the authority to make decisions at the table. If not, then we invite Board of Education members who have authority to make decisions to join our negotiation. In addition, the MTA asks that we have full day negotiation sessions instead of an hour or two. These changes will hopefully facilitate the process and we can reach an agreement in a timely manner. I'm a teacher, I'm an MTA member and I'm a taxpayer in this district and I want Monticello to be a district of choice. Our Monticello students deserve teachers who have chosen to work in this district. They deserve, deserve to be taught by veteran teachers who are dedicated to this district. So many things must change to make this happen, but it all starts with the teachers. Without us, Monticello Central Schools cannot exist.
Anyone else get it? Thank you very much. Moving on to superintendent update and information, Dr. Evans.
Thank you, Board President Crumley. So some updates tonight, first and foremost, on the state budget front because that will have a significant impact on not only the budget that we're developing and proposing for next year, but also some of the items that Ms. Keller just alluded to. So last week, I met with Assemblywoman Gunther. I've also attended discussions with the New York State Council's School Superintendent's advocacy team. We do believe that there will be some increases in foundation aid compared to what Governor Hochul has proposed. Just a reminder to everyone that the governor has proposed about a $240,000 reduction in our foundation aid package. Somebody may recall at the last board meeting, Ms. Phelan gave kind of a preliminary overview of, you know, a rollover budget, in other words, taking this year's program and rolling it into next year. If we were to keep that rollover budget and the board were to increase tax levy to the cap limit, which we presently estimate be around 2.75%, give foundation aid recap at the same safe murmurs level, which is a 0% change from last year, and the board was to designate about 3% of its fund balance, which would reduce its undesigned fund balance, 4% of its budget, we still would have an estimated budget shortfall of $1.4 million. So we are exploring cuts in programs with our administrators to help meet that shortfall. These, you know, we'll be, we'll be bringing these back to the board as we get closer to finalizing a budget. Again, once the state budget deal is reached, according to the state constitution, that's supposed to be April 1st. However, the indications are that it will go past that mandatory deadline. In the interim, though, you will hear from administrators who are presenting what they believe their departments and schools need to provide and render the best services possible for students and staff. So we will be meeting with them, you know, kind of separately and behind the scenes to, you know, recommend, you know, potential areas for reductions, programs for the upcoming year, unless we were to receive additional funding well beyond what the governor's proposing. And on that front, I will be meeting with Senator Peter Oberacher on Tuesday, March 5th to discuss these state budget issues and again, the impact of foundation aid cuts to our district. Some other items for the board's consideration tonight, I'm recommending the adoption of a proposed academic calendar for next year, 2024-25. This calendar was developed after reviewing other adopted school district calendars in Sullivan County as well as consulting with some of our collective bargaining units. This calendar includes nine emergency closure days, which is the same number we have as this year, and the first day for students would be Thursday, September 5th. As was mentioned. Uh, as was mentioned, I think referenced earlier by Ms. LaRusso, uh, we have received, uh, the report on our community engagement focus group. That was held with community stakeholders, uh, who were not staff members of the district, nor did they have children who attended schools in the district back in early December. Uh, that's included in my report. Uh, we're currently also wrapping up a community engagement online survey for parents and caregivers. Uh, these reports will be reviewed by administrators, uh, in upcoming meetings and will be using those data to make improvements in community engagement in the upcoming year. We have already taken a few steps in that report to address, uh, one of those being that the, uh, whom do I contact link was broken. Um, it wasn't necessarily broken. It was just the way it was configured in our website, but that's been correct. And so, uh, anything in there that can be immediately done, we aren't right by, but we, our intention is to have the minister to develop goals off that for next year. Uh, snow day update. We had a snow day earlier this week. Uh, we have three remaining emergency closure days, uh, for the rest of the year. If we go beyond that, then we'd be switching to remote instruction for any subsequent emergency closure. And, uh, the next superintendent office hours will be next Tuesday, February 20th, from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. And also a well-deserved congratulations to our student athletes who are recognized earlier. And, uh, I hope our boys basketball team is playing well right now in Valley Central. Everybody has a score. Any questions?
So, to go back to, to who to contact. So, I know as a parent, when I go on School Tool, I can hit like the little email with the, the teacher's name on it to email them. But sometimes I don't get a response back. So, but I use my regular email, email it that way and I get a response back within 24 hours or a day. So, is it possible that that's not working and parents might be thinking that they're not getting the response from their teachers? Because I've noticed a couple of times that's happened. But as soon as, like I said, as soon as I email from a regular email, don't use School Tool, they get right back to me.
We'll get to that.
Also.
That's the first I've heard of it.
I've had the, I've had the same thing. I hope that.
Also, when it, you want to contact us and it says, put the three, uh, you can put like the first three and last name. Sometimes the teachers don't show up, but I know they're there, but they just don't show up. The email, the work, and it doesn't show up.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Evans on this report?
Yeah, one question. So, with that survey where it says the, uh, recommendations, is anything to be done with that on page seven? From the community?
Sorry, that's just the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, uh, some of those can be done straight away. Uh, we have in the past had, uh, administrators. Uh, we have a corporate membership with, um, Monticello Rotary. So, you know, Mr. Crumley and I have attended, uh, some of those meetings, but we also encourage administrators to do that. So, uh, that's something that could be easily done. Uh, the wayfinding is something that, you know, could be relatively done. And, uh, I, I had met with Courtney Fonte to talk about some of these other things. But, uh, I think what we want to get first is the survey data back from parents and caregivers, uh, and then kind of align things.
Okay. Another thing that I think is important too, um, if students are considering going to Sullivan County Community College, we have an alumni that is an academic advisor, Naquan, with his phone, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, he's an academic advisor, which I found very comforting when I went in there to realize that he ran it myself. I was like, oh, it's very nice to see that, that we have students that are looking into the college to know, hey, this is our alumni here. Just to get that out there.
Yeah, so Naquan is, I believe is my brother's keeper mentor with us. So, he is in the schools regularly. And we also have, uh, Ashley Whitetrap, who's like the ex-counselor who had worked, uh, at SUNY Sullivan officials for, uh, a few years before he joined us. So, but I, I'll be sure to pass that one. Okay. One other thing before I forget, we do have, uh, at least one new teacher with us tonight and I want to recognize and welcome her. Elizabeth Van Horn will be a new elementary teacher at Coach Elementary. Right, but returning after a bout of retirement as a special ed teacher in the high school is Alan Devlin. So, returning as a, uh, high school special education teacher.
Uh, thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Ms. Phelan.
Thank you, President Crumley. This evening we have, um, the budget status claim, uh, claims, auditor report, school lunch profit and loss for the month of December. Every student activity quarterly report. And, um, Cook and the middle school both got a Sullivan 180 grant, so I'm asking board to amend the budget to allow them to spend that money. And, um, the director of transportation has asked us to access some buses that are no longer used.
Questions for Mrs. Phelan? Very much, Lisa. Uh, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mrs. Garland.
Thank you, President Crumley. Um, I just have two things tonight. I wanted to, um, just bring your attention and contract, um, for one of our private schools. Uh, there's two contracts on the agenda, as well as I just wanted to talk a little bit about, um, our cast for this next coming school year. Um, so if you remember about a year ago, we were identified, um, as a district in need of improvement, um, as well as two of our buildings, uh, Cook Elementary School as a comprehensive support and improvement school, as well as Rutherford as a targeted support and improvement. Um, I look at this as a way to grow our students and get better. It's not, to me, it's not negative because the state really has changed how they look at things. Um, they really want schools to grow and to do better for their students. They provide us money to be able to do that. So, it's actually an advantage. Um, we've, we're, we're working very hard this year, um, at both Cook and Rutherford and all of our buildings, but especially those two buildings because we're identified, um, meeting regularly, looking at data, really working to, um, to get our students to a much better place. And so, this is a three-year cycle. So, we were identified a year ago. Um, we've been re-identified, which is expected. You really can't get off the list, um, for three years. So, we've been re-identified. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, it's not concerning. Um, it's actually a good thing as far as I'm concerned. And as I mentioned, I was on a state meeting, um, with our elementary principal at, at Cook today. And the state is talking about how, what a great thing that we're doing and, and how our committees are working and they're very impressed with our plan. And the data shows that we're having improvement already this year. So, um, again, next year, those two buildings will be re-identified and there will be additional funding coming that we are using, um, to work on, on making our education for our students better than it can be. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Garland. Moving on, Mrs. Greco.
I motion that we approve action items T1 through T16 of the slate.
Second on that, by Ms. Jersey, any discussion? All in favor? Ordered?
I motion that we approve this late action item, T1 through T16.
A second on that, made by Mr. Broden. Any discussion? All in favor? So, ordered. Thank you very much, Mrs. Greco. Moving on, closing the meeting, correspondence. None listened at this time. Uh, Mrs. Leibl, any questions or comments from the public? Thank you very much. Um, before we officially adjourn, if there are any students here from government class and you need to have your paperwork signed off, any board member can sign off your paperwork. Motion to adjourn, made by Mr. Broden, seconded by Ms. Greco. Any discussion? All in favor? So, order.
Do they need to open a balance time? Open again, open a balance time.
What takes are gonna come out?
I wonder if it's still a game, but is that it?